Before we're done with that, we'll be sending out notices again to hold a public information meeting to talk about more of the details of construction and what this specifically means for your property. After that, we'll incorporate anything we learned from those meetings into the plans, advertise the project, open bids, and hopefully if those numbers are good, they will be awarded in traffic. Another idea that we had for this is we could do, prior to actually starting construction, we can hold another public info meeting just to talk about expectations for life during construction. It's gonna be a little preview here, it's gonna be a huge pain in the butt, and getting access to properties is going to be a challenge at times, but we'll work through that and try to keep you realistic expectations for what that will be like. So starting construction, basically when frost comes out of the ground in May of 2020, as I said before, that assessment hearing would be scheduled for the fall of 2020, which would be around the time of substantial completion. So substantial completion basically means that 95% of the work associated with the project is done. You've got the first lift of pavement down, all the curb and gutters in, I've got the grass, and that type of thing. That final lift of pavement, we will hold off on doing that final lot of pavement until spring of 2021. This will just allow the opportunity, if there's any type of issue during construction that would cause settlement in the road, we could address that issue before we put that final lift of pavement on. So, like I said before, on the fifth, or last Thursday here, we held a public information meeting, and we had some very detailed discussion regarding the project. What I've got up on the screen here now is just a general summary of some of the comments that were received. If you want to see a full breakdown of all the comments received, council has that. I can give you those comments after, once I'm done here. But just a couple of things that I'll note, there's several questions relating to the need for replacement of sidewalks and driveways, especially if your sidewalk or driveway is in worst condition, and we have kind of talked through that here tonight. We have discussed the option of potentially upgrading the entire project area from a seven ton to a nine ton pavement section, based on some observations that heavier traffic was observed on the southern end of the project. Lots of questions clarifying on how those assessments are actually calculated. There's a few concerns from a couple owners over that total assessment that they're looking at for their specific property, or total project costs. Several owners have shared property-specific information that will ultimately be used in design of the project, and maybe for less unknown conditions, so that was appreciated for anybody that provided that. And if there's any other comment, or if anyone you would like to see, I think I can give you a copy of the full breakdown of that. Otherwise, I think what I'd like to do is either open it up for any questions that you might have, or if you just have a general comment, I'd like to share the same answer.
Let's start by just emphasizing a couple of things. One thing that, the number isn't specifically in the PowerPoint, but when we look at the total estimated project cost and the total estimated assessments amount, it works out to that it's roughly 26% of the overall total that's being assessed. You have 74% of the overall total roughly is being financed by the city through the general levy, that bond sale. So that's roughly the breakdown. In order to use the type of bond that the city is selling, which is specific to the Chapter 429 law that we're using, we're required to assess a minimum of 20%, so we are in compliance with that law. But just for the big picture, the overall amount of the project cost roughly, based on the numbers that we put together, is about 26% assessments. And again, the schedule that we had shown, it has all these steps along the way, as Derek had pointed out, and just to reemphasize that, the council has the ability at any point along their process, if they think things aren't going well, or the costs are getting out of control, or other red flags are coming up, and they've got other priorities that they need to attend to, they can pull the plug on the project at any time, so.
Until about March 20?
Till you award a contract.
Yeah.
Yep, that's when you're committed.
It's either the shift is docked or it says.
Yep, yep, that's when you're committed to a contract to build the improvements. So with that, I guess we, first we look to council to see if council has any questions before we open up to the audience. All right, then I guess we'll open up for questions from the audience, and Derek and I will try to answer those as best we can.
Do you want people to come up to the, yeah, anybody that wants to speak up? If you have any questions, I'm retired, do it now.
I got a question regarding the Fourth Street Alley. I know gravel wash has been a real problem coming down the alley and washing out into it, we haven't, how far up are you gonna go up forward? Are you gonna wrap it around in front of the bus garage? What are you gonna do?
Yeah, so currently what's going on there is that gravel lot comes right up on the edge of the road, so just like you're saying, that water, or that drainage that's coming across there carries a lot of gravel into the street. So what we'll do with it is we'll extend an actual driveway apron up past the curb to try and lighten that slope for that gravel that's closer to the road, so that'll be the key there. Another thing that we're doing in that area is extending actual storm sewers, so there's adequate inlet capacity to catch all that water. So a couple of different things in combination that we're doing there, but that's one of the goals of the project, is to address that.
I got one, you guys are talking about grades on the road and sidewalks for adjusting. There's, I know a few driveways in mine, one of them particularly, but that are already really steep, going into the properties, or how are you guys going to address that?
So, when we're going through the actual final design of that street, one of the things that we look at is the driveway slopes for each of those driveways that we're affecting. My goal with that design is to not make the driveway slope any worse than what it is here right now. If I can make it better, we'll take that opportunity, but sometimes in those areas where there's a really slope, really steep driveway slope, there's some type of design challenge that resulted in, you know, that driveway slope being that way originally. So that's what we're kind of fighting, that I can't make any promises that we'll, that we can make it better, or even that we're not gonna make it a little bit worse, but generally, my goal with the design of the project is trying to make it better.
My thing is always, like mine in particular, if you make it worse, then I can't even access my garage, so.
So, I mean, most of the time what that means, if we're looking at a scenario where we're lowering the street, you know, increase the slope of the driveway, that we can raise the street up, we can make it, we can make it better. There are areas of this project where I'll be looking to raise the actual grade of the street, and that will make your driveway slope lighter. But the other way that we can, the other approach that we can take to making the driveway slope lighter is by just taking more of your pavement back into your property, and use a longer, a longer area to grade in that property.
And doing something like that would not increase your assessment. If we have to chase your driveway farther back in order to get that slope down to an acceptable level, that's part of the overall street cost, I mean, that's part of what we have to do to get the street built, so that wouldn't increase your specific assessment.
Yeah.
It would go into the overall cost. And there are practical maximums that we use in our designs, so we do have like maximums, you know, Derek mentioned some driveways make it worse, you know, something that may be like a 3% or 4% now might increase to a 5% or 6%, which is still pretty moderate. But driveways that are like in double-digit percentage slopes, those are the ones that will identify as critical when we're doing the design, and those are the ones that we'll really try and design around so that they stay where they are or get better.
Derek, are you willing to meet with, I'm older, like JP there, with specific concerns to?
Yeah, and that's, you know, when we had, I talked about that design public meeting, that I have that scheduled for sometime in January, that's gonna be a really good time to talk about those specific concerns. Before that meeting goes out, we'll send out a notice to let you know, hey, there's a public meeting going on. If for whatever reason you cannot meet that meeting, my contact information is on there. I can meet with you, I can call with you, you know, whatever you want. There'll be plenty of opportunities for us to all talk before it actually, before it push out.
Other questions, comments?
Now's your opportunity to speak up. If not, we will then close the public hearing. Okay, well, hold on then. Okay, next on the list is Hiawatha Transit Program update.
I'm Tracy Hogan, I'm the Director of Transit for Hiawatha and Transit. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak to the city. I'm fairly new, I started a year ago, Mark is on my advisory committee, so in conversations with him, I asked him to come in and say why improvement's up, and talk a little bit about what we do. You know, we offer a dollar ride service in Canyon and Monta Mingo, you guys share a bus, it's a dollar shop, you got one, right? We have the ridership numbers up here, I did put a, so again, Mark's on our packet meetings, this is the pack that literally updates in here, and shows your ridership numbers and the cost for operating service in Canyon and Monta Mingo. We do share a bus with Canyon and Monta Mingo, over the last six months in here.
He scanned in, unfortunately I couldn't get him scanned in.
Okay, I'll lean on my side for you. Oh, there, there, yeah. Nineteen. So, in the side angle, I give you your numbers. So for riders, the first pack of the year, yes, I have a lot memorized, but not everything. Thank you. We did 4,000 and, 4,080 rides for the past six months between Canyon and Monta Mingo this year. So, that's a great number, what we've done is we haul a lot of children and a lot of adults, we give them rides on a regular basis, we did do a survey last in April this year with your community, we had about 14 responses, which wasn't a lot, but based on the ridership, it was quite a few. Forty-one percent of them used the bus that answered the survey, 71% of them liked us, liked the survey, liked the bus, wants to continue to use the service. The ones that didn't either had their own transportation or had requested options to go outside of Canyon, so can I take a ride to Rochester, can I take a ride to the city some of us. We are not licensed to be able to transit riders that far. One thing we do to help supplement needs, so if someone needs to take a ride to the doctor's department in Rochester, we have a volunteer service called BART, so people can call us, get set up, and we have people that take their personal vehicles and will transport someone to the cities or to Rochester. Our restrictions are it's within a day trip, so they can go and they can come back the same day. One of the things that's to look forward for Canyon, one, make sure you guys get a new bus, it's already in your budget, Minnott's offering a deal this year at 10% community match, typically the buses are 20, so if you guys want a little relaute on that one, so they'll be a new bus. We replace buses every five years, so. What we're trying to do, like I said, I'm new, I'm getting out, meeting everybody, saying hi, want to make sure you guys know that I'm available and open for anybody to reach out and talk to me at any time, so if you have any concerns, questions, comments, please feel free to reach out to me. We are trying to get out and talk, and we need it more, it's been a while, when we did these surveys, a lot of the people are like, we haven't seen anybody come Hiawatha in a really long time, and that, that's not my goal, I want to stay front and center with the communities that we service and serve. And so, we've been working on going to schools, businesses in the area, senior centers, group homes, we've been targeting some of the bigger cities, but we need to get to our local areas. So Hiawatha does, we handle 20 communities, Canyon and Monta Mingo's one of them, we have three route towns, Redwood, Northfield, and Purple, they're big areas. Lot of dollar rides in Canyon and Monta Mingo, our, your buses stored in some of the area here, and that's where your bus driver comes from, so. We did get a family member in Monta Mingo reached out to us just the other day and asked us about student transportation needs between the kids between Monta Mingo and Canyon, so we've actually reached out to some of the school board members, to see if there's a way we can get involved and be more helpful. I know that there's a transportation committee going on with the school board, and so we are, we are available for any assistance that we could offer within our transit time, so we look forward to being able to partnership with you guys. Like I said, if there's anything else I can do to help you, I look forward to it, and if you guys have any, any comments or areas, a way where we can get out and talk to the community more, or suggestions, I'm open to hearing those as well. But I just wanted to thank you and stop by and say hi.
I think that the program's going well for being in our second year, our ridership numbers are up, and as Tracy said, there's gonna be a new bus in 2020, so we've had a lot of interest with families and, you know, children as far as using the service, which is really nice to see, so I think that it's going, you know, going well.
Look forward to growing it.
Well, thank you Tracy for the update, really do appreciate it, so, thank you very much. Next on the list, County Commissioner Barney Nessett.
Good evening everyone, I just thought I'd stop by and get updated on what's going on at county level. Right now, I'd first start with the budget, we'll be setting our preliminary budget for your next September. So at that point, we will, we will set our levy for the county level. Right now, we're actually a little under 3% for an increase right now, we're still negotiating As you all know, the increase last year was pretty heavy, I think everybody thought it was across all avenues. It's looking like it'll probably fall on homeowners more so than farmers this time around, any increase because the home values are going up, and farm values are actually going down a little bit, so the homeowners will carry up a bigger share of the burden in the county. Couple things I've noted with the county's budget, the, a couple years ago, we passed an extra $200,000 to go into the road budget every year, and then later in 2018, the board passed the countywide sales tax. Countywide sales tax is estimated to bring in $2 million a year. Now, this, a couple months ago, we found out it's actually bringing in $3 million a year. So, depending how you look at that, it's a good thing or a bad thing, if you're paying it, it's a bad thing, if you're using it for roads, it's a good thing. So as part of the budget negotiation, I've been trying to cut that extra $200,000 out of the budget, just to get a cut. We're getting an extra million dollars, we should go do about it tomorrow, so, I'm working on that part, and so I'm hoping this will let me down a little more because we went by, which is about, just over a million dollars extra over last year. So, still a lot of money, you know, as the budget grows every year, you know, even 2% is a million bucks, you know, so I mean, it starts to be a lot of money, even at small percent rates. Other item of interest is the countywide trash ordinance that's being worked on. That's something that'll hit the areas around here a lot harder than areas closer to Redwood, so, I've actually been, I don't know what you call it, I mean, I haven't, I haven't voted for Commissioner for the District 1 in Redwood, mainly as it became evident that the only reason most of them wanted that appointment was so they could get the vote on the trash ordinance in its current form, which would cost this area a lot more money. It estimated it'll cost $17.3 million to implement, and of that, 50% of the cost comes from 27% of the county, which is pretty much entirely from around the desk. That's why I've been so adamantly opposed against it, and just trying to do whatever I could to stop it. That's why I haven't appointed a Commissioner for District 1, because the one they wanted was for sure to vote for, so, I was kinda, after it became evident that that's what their real goal was, in my opinion. I didn't think it was right, you know, not to have representation, but I gotta look out for my residents, so I thought I'd do what I could at the time to see if we can limit the, limit the costs to our residents. So it looks like now we have two candidates running for District 1, so there won't be a really likely Commissioner for the first party over here. So my thought is we'll probably end up with it in its current form. Unless, you know, the one Commissioner I think that's running is probably a little, not super warm on it, but we'll see if that works. The whole idea is to get the landfill into the closed landfill program out of state. Everybody would like that, because that takes the liability off the county and the county residents as far as cleanup of that landfill. So we go into what they call their superfund program, which is, if you live in a trash bill, there's solid waste tax, you know, 9.75% on your trash bill for every type they pick up, and if you're a business, it's 17%. So we pay a lot of tax already towards that fund, and it's just meant just for environmental cleanup of landfills. So I guess from that point, it might be nice to take that in, to get it into the program and get the life over with. So that's, that's kind of the gist of that. I don't know if they have any questions, or is there? A lot of it, it was nice to see they, did they get all done with 12 lot here, they were good, and I think they were finishing up this week, weren't they?
Looks like yeah.
So they got that done, and then 14 will get done next year, so we'll be taller from, from County 30 all the way to 52. But they will be shutting off access of 14 to 52, if you have to go up, they're gonna build a new road from 14 kinda up to 24 up by the hospital there, they're gonna connect those two, so to get on 52, you'll have to move up about, I think it's two miles, till you get the new exit with all the roundabouts on it by the hospital, so.
So you're gonna connect that into 24 somehow?
Correct, yeah, it'll be down to 24.
My mom lives out there. And part of your trash thing, we just got a dumpster out there, it's 17% tax to residential out there.
On the road, is that outside the city? Right, I thought it would be.
That's what I was quoted.
About like 9% or something, unless that's just in the city. I haven't heard that, but.
I was quoted, it's from countryside.
So like, you know, I think one name just rebuilt their trash, businesses that came out to $90 a month for a ER dumpster, well, that's a fair comparison, but, similar or a lot less. But I think in the long run, you're gonna be paying a lot more. I mean, the bad thing, the biggest thing about that trash agreement is, there's very little cost control on the top side. So, it comes in at 17.3 million for 20 years, if they never raised the tipping fees in Redwood for 20 years, well, that cost of government, you know, usually goes up, you know, and they can raise it up to a maximum of 2.5% plus whatever the government inflation index is. Usually government inflation index is around 3% or something, 2.5 to 3. So, they could raise it 5% a year, you know, in that case, then it gets up into the, you know, 40 million, you know, and it goes up pretty fast, and you start adding 5% a year every year, you know, so maximums could be, could be a lot of money, which is the reason I've been fighting for, just so hard to, not to stop it, or if I could, I think damn it, I was gonna shoot the same thing. Very good to, to get some, get some concessions, so. Right now, it probably doesn't look real great.
I'm amazed it hasn't gone in yet, to be honest with you, they pushed so hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's an old Red Wing Eagle article from about 1980 that said they were building this facility to be a moneymaker. Well, it's taken them 40 years, but it looks, you know, they're gonna keep trying to turn it into a moneymaker for them.
Yeah. Police, everybody didn't do it out here, you guys, your own town council that shares a lot of the country, so. I'd like our leadership to seem to be very community involved, just to, wanna get out and meet the people and stuff, it's nice to see. Just got any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get our next one, the Secretary.
Thank you Mayor. In light of the time, we do have detailed information in your packet, but in light of the time, we'll just, I'll cover the information at a higher level, and then if you have questions you're concerned to ask, and we'll answer those, but we'll try and go through these items fairly quickly. The first item is an update on Second Street, Senator 3 Sewer Improvement Project, that's right out here, the main business street in town, Second Street. Contractor did start work the last week of August, specified completion date is September 13th. They've gotten, they've made good progress on the work, as you see, if you've been out there, they've got the petunias patches back in place now, they've got both manholes in place, so all the underground excavation work is done. They did run into some soft soils on the one patch right at the intersection, we had to come in and do some additional subgrade soil corrections. We're working out the final price on that extra soils work with the contractor, but we anticipate it's still gonna be within the overall project budget, so we don't think it'll cause any problem with the budget, because we underran on some other items, so we think the costs will in general balance out. The work left to do is they've got to put down the, they've got to do a little bit of sidewalk work yet, they've got to get the pavements, the striping back down, and then the main thing they have to do yet is line, put the liner in the sewer pipe. And that, unfortunately, their subcontractor has told them they are not gonna be able to meet the completion date of September 13th. And we had told them in no uncertain terms that when they asked to have their completion extended, that it would be a hard date. So we have informed them that they will be charged liquidated damages for any time they go beyond the 13th, and that will be deducted from their final payments. Speaking of payments, we do have the first payment up for consideration of approval tonight in your packet. Total amount of the payment is $70,668,84, which represents just under a third of the overall project construction amount of $215,000. So we're not paying for any of the two minutes yet, we're paying for work that was done as of last.
Up till Wednesday of last week.
Up to Wednesday of last week, so. All work that has been completed and has been, you know, certified that it is complete. So the action that would certainly try and answer any questions you have about the project, the only action we're requesting is your consideration of approval for that payment request to the contractor.
At any special meeting we had here a week or two ago, there was something said about the subcontractor had declared bankruptcy, so that it was all up in the air. I don't know, was that just hearsay?
I haven't, I haven't heard anything about that, no. They're having an issue with one of their subcontractors not showing up, but I did hear nothing, nothing I've heard as a result of the work.
Okay, so.
It's just a matter of, it's just a matter of they scheduled too much work to actually complete within the time that they promised.
Whoever pays the most gets the, gets the guy. So any idea how soon it will be done?
Well.
When they run out of other work?
What I have been told is it will be sometime between next week and the first week in August, which starts on September 30.
October.
Or.
Yeah.
So it's sometime in the next one to four weeks.
Yeah. Once they actually do get out there, it's expected to be, like you've heard this before, it's expected to be a week's worth of work.
Does it say three, four days worth of work?
This time around, it will be less disruptive, they don't have to shut down the entire road, they're basically working center lane, traffic's moving around, so it'll be less disruptive, but.
I haven't, were you informed on this that they were not gonna be finishing?
They told me a few days, but, well, basically late during the week before they started work, so it was the week of the 20th or something like that, so they started on the 26th.
Hey, I've got a concern, the morning that they were filling in right here on the corner of Second Street and Highway 56 and 60, pardon me, I was out there for a good 20 minutes or more, watching them fill the. or more watching the fill that they had taken out. And they were dumping it right back in again. Now, they had a sheet foot there on the one side of the manhole. They ran it in and out a couple of times. On the right-hand side, they had themselves a vibrator on their back hole. Now, to me, I know that this was not properly done, period. I honestly got to say that. Then they hurried up. I mean, they wiped out this pile in quick time. And then they brought the blacktop in. And I thought, this is a strange thing to go with. But I didn't know anything about it. If this, I figured there was an engineer or somebody here. But I really questioned what they were doing.
When, when, when did you say this was?
When they were filling in around the manhole up here on Second Street by the newly, where it had the road completely blocked out. I could go back to the date.
Isn't that the one they dug back out?
Yes, that's the one they dug back out when it didn't meet specifications.
After that happened?
I was there during the time that they were filling it in.
Okay, before, before they had done it.
In other words, they were dumping the fill back in again. This was clay. Now, they took out all of the, the concrete chunks and stuff like that. That they took out. But the rest of what that was sitting there, I mean, they just scooped it in with the back hole that they had there, dumped it in, kind of smoothed it out like this here on a sheet foot over a couple of times. There was no compaction. The next thing that it came back, they were processing putting the blacktop down.
Okay. And that was the blacktop that they had pulled out?
Yes. And then it was left. And then I found out after, pardon me, that it did not meet specifications, which I figured it did not.
Yep.
That was my personal opinion.
Well, that would make sense with, with what happened. And realistically, on those projects, that type of issue does not happen. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we didn't catch that beforehand. But at the end of the day, what's being, what's being self-doubt on site there was, was actually corrected. Now, you guys are not paying for removal of that, of that asphalt. Basically, what, what George mentioned before, with that, that subgrade soil correction, the only portion that you would be paying additional would be any of the additional rock that they had to bring in to actually make that, that soil correction as if that.
Is that classified?
They, they used, what I have to use was inch and a half open graved stone. Basically, a bridging material that can, that's intended to, agencies that will need for local, like for payment.
Yeah. And if you look on the pay request, item number nine is batuminous patching. And we're paying that by the square yard and not by the ton. So that batuminous they put in first that failed, then they had to take that out and replace it with new batuminous, that's no cost to the project because we're, we're just paying, their final patch, we measure up the square yardage, that's what we pay. And that, that price was set with the contractor. So there was no cost for that. As Derek mentioned, the only extra cost that we would pay them for is that they brought in material to improve the soil. So if we, we got a value, an increase in value of the soil that they brought in. So if they brought in a rock, granite or rock material to replace clay material, that's the only part that we would pay for in those subgrade corrections.
Was this planned to replace what they dug out, put back in again?
Yeah, that's typ, that's typical is to, to use native soils to replace up until you get to the design section of the road. And then you evaluate if the, if it's soft, then you do a subcut and replace a portion of that, the native soils with the gravel or a sand. But it's not typically planned to, to replace with imported soils all the way from the bottom of the excavation back up. That's just not cost effective to do it that way. Derek, do you know what type you had, what, what the extra layer thickness of the rock that they brought in, the bridging rock, the inch and a half?
Well, there were some areas where they went bigger than this, but generally, most of them were on the order of 12 inches.
That's what I would have guessed, 12 to 18, yeah.
Yeah. There was one area that was very soft that they, they took another 18 to 14 total thickness.
Now, did they do that also for the other two locations? Same thing?
And we do have warranty on the work, and warranty is written to be two years.
Yeah.
So any settlements that show up in the first two winters, if you're going to see
a settlement, usually it's in the springtime after it goes through a freeze zone. That clay has a chance to expand and contract. So.
Okay. Well, we have to have a motion on that either to pay the, pay one, request one.
What, what is the total cost to the county?
The total contract is $215,156. And the amount we're asking for, for payment tonight is $70,668. So a little less than one-third of the overall total.
And we thought we'd prove 5% of the payment.
I would move to approve the pay request.
Get a second on it?
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion made in second for a paid request for rock construction for $70,668. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, in favor, it's aye win.
Item B under engineering is the wastewater NPDES permit removal, or excuse me, permit renewal. As we discussed before, you, because you own and operate a sanitary sewer disposal system, you're permitted for that system by the MPCA. And your permit is on a five-year renewal cycle. Your permit is scheduled to renew in February of 2020. And it has to be, had to be submitted, the renewal application had to be submitted by September 2nd. You would authorize us to work on that application and get it submitted. And we did get that done. So the permit renewal application along with the phosphorus management minimization plan, excuse me, the phosphorus management plan, those two items were submitted by the deadline of September 2nd. And the PCA has sent correspondence back to the city that those are accepted and were received and are in the process of, of being reviewed and, and processed at, at MPCA. The other item we have to do is a mercury minimization plan. And when we talked with them and explained the status of the Second Street project, they agreed that they would extend the completion date for that plan because they know that this project is an important component of the mercury minimization plan. So that piece has still yet to be completely submitted. But everything is on track for the, the permit renewal. And we haven't gotten any, any indications that things won't proceed as, as expected.
So this delayed completion does not impact that at all?
Correct. We're still on pace to have the permit renewed in February as, as scheduled.
And should this go on and on and on? Because it is determined that we have to have completed this plan before they will give us the permit.
Oh, it.
Yeah. So you have the, I mean, the rule is that you have to meet the new limit requirements of these 10 days before the permit expires, which ultimately ends up being in February of 2020. Now, the longer our contractor gives delays means that if something goes on where the concentration of mercury is still an issue after the project is completed, that's less time to address it after the fact. That's been communicated with the contractor. And that's why it's important that.
And at some point, how much does weather play a part in this? You know, if, if you keep extending week, month, whatever, you know, pretty soon you're talking freezing.
And that won't be, the lining work that is to be done won't be impacted.
Okay.
The weather, I wish you'd delay that in. Freezing, I mean, the depth of the sewer is below frost line. So it's just a question of when they get here. They just set up over the manholes and everything is done remotely through the manholes, through their robotic cameras and their robot pieces of equipment. So.
Can I give further up the red wing?
Yeah. So no action is needed at this point on the permit application. Everything is in the process. Red Wing Avenue, as you know, we just had the public hearing. We had the pub, the neighborhood information meeting last week. So the next two items up in projects, in the project development process would be to consider the resolution to officially order the improvement and direct us to prepare the detailed plans and specifications. So that resolution number 2019-29 is in your packet for consideration. So at this point, we would open up to you for discussion and consideration of that resolution.
Well, we've had public information hearing, we've had a public hearing. There's still is some checks and balances available to us. I would think we should proceed on the project.
I'll second that.
You're making a motion, Derek?
We approve resolution. 2019-29.
Okay.
And I second that.
Okay. There's been a motion made in second for a resolution 2019-29 ordering improvement and preparation of plans for the Red Wing Avenue project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, ayes win.
Thank you, counsel. We'll, we'll proceed with that work. Probably should have mentioned this before you pass the resolution, but the next item is to authorize, or to approve the proposal for our fee for that work. At this point, since you're preparing, you've now authorized, prepared the plan specification. That's, we've now committed to the expense of preparing that. We do a proposal letter in your packet that outlines the scope of work to prepare the detailed construction plans and specifications, and to take that process through the bidding. And then, so that would be all of this authorization we cover all the way up to until we bring the bids back to you and present them for contractor word. But in between that would be when we bring the plans to you to approve the plans and authorize the bidding. So this will carry us all the way through the contract. The total estimated fee that we've gotten, and our work will be done on an hourly basis based on the rates we have in our master contract with the city. The estimated total for the fee is $280,410, which represents about 7.5% of the overall project cost. So we would submit that proposal to you for consideration of approval.
Well, if we're into it this deep already, I don't think we're going to bottom out. So I'll favor the motion that we approved the final design for engineering.
Second.
Okay, it's been, motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, counsel. The last item on the engineering update, letter D, is the update on the business park development on the EDA property. We've been working on that. And Derek, I may need your assistance on this because I know you've been doing a lot of the detail work.
Sure.
We do have a, a EDA, special EDA meeting coming up this Thursday. We have met with property owners again to talk about access and most types of things. But what we've got specifically for tonight is a proposal to do final survey work and data collection and wetland evaluations on the area outside of the EDA property. You know, we have done this, the topographic survey within the boundaries of the parcel that the city owns. And we've done the wetland delineations on there. But in the course of going through the preliminary layout and preliminary engineering, we identified that it makes sense to bring the sewer and water extensions from the north, from Highway 60 down to the project. And since that now is the route that's being pursued, we need to get the survey and the wetland delineations done on that piece of land between our north parcel boundary and the Highway 60 right away. So that we know what we're dealing with, so that we can design those parts of the project. And so tonight is the proposal in your packet to do that topographic survey, to do that wetland delineation and certification, and the other data collection that we need to do on that area between the EDA parcel and Highway 60 for those utility extensions. And the estimated cost of that work for our fee is $44,990. So with that, Derek, did I miss any of the highlights?
So you, the only thing, other thing I'll point out with this, so this is, this is just another proposal. It's basically the next step. We knew that this step was coming and it's been included in the engineering, you know, the design budgets originally established for the project when that grant was applied for. The only reason, well, I guess we just didn't include it there. I think that's pretty big step of work. One of the things that I'll, I'll note with this is this, these particular items are a little bit time sensitive because we, I, the wetland survey needs to be done before, for the, ideally, we can do the survey before those fields are covered in snow and you can still see, still see those things. But still got to wait till the corn comes out of the ground, or till the corn's picked. So it's, all, all this work is kind of time sensitive. And in order to stay on a project schedule that will allow for construction in 2020, we would need to do this like in the next couple of months. So that's the reason why we're talking about it here today.
And as Derek mentioned, this wasn't in the original scope work because if you recall, originally, we did the survey within the parcel itself, the 30 acre parcel with the wetlands. Because we had originally had thought we could serve it from sewer and water from the county road on the south side of the parcel. That's why we didn't do anything outside on the north side of, of the parcel that the city owned. It was only in the course of doing that preliminary layout and looking at the best ways to serve the property and the idea of actually bringing the sewer and water down from the north from Highway 60. And as that option was developed further and made the most sense and was the one to reach consensus for the EDA and the council, that's why this, this additional scope of work to get that same kind of data that we have on the parcel was triggered. But as we said, Derek had mentioned, this cost, once that was identified a while ago, this cost was built into the overall project budget. That was used for some mill for the grant applications and all the other numbers that have been shared up to this point.